Thank you for joining us tonight. As you see, we're a few members short. We had one with a personal issue and another one sick, but we're gonna go on. All right. We'll now call the Monday, February 12th, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting for the Southwestern City Schools to order. Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Liskini. Ms. Martindale. Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso.
Here.
Next, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
Make a motion, Peterson.
Peterson.
One second.
D'Angelo. Any additions or corrections to that? The none roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Next, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the January 22nd, 2024 meeting and the February 5th, 2024 meeting?
Make a motion, Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. D'Angelo. Any corrections to that? Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Uh, we got board reports and board reports. Seeing none, we're gonna go to public participation. Two agenda items and the first gentleman will be Bob Jimmison. He's here. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Bosso. Do I need to swear in or anything? A little different than my zoning meetings back home. Um, so I'm here today to discuss one of the items on the agenda today is, uh, under Section F, the approved, uh, resolutions to file the complaint against valuation of real property tax. Uh, one of those properties in the, uh, listing is Cherry Blossom Senior Housing Limited Partnership. I'm here on behalf of National Church Residences today to provide a little bit of information about that property, uh, in the sale. It actually really isn't a sale, it's a conveyance more so, uh, and asked that the board consider, uh, moving to dismiss that particular parcel from the, uh, packages presented by Rich and Gillis. Um, as I said, I'm with National Church Residences. Uh, we oversee about three hundred different apartment complexes throughout the state of Ohio and throughout other states in our country here. Uh, Cherry Blossom located at fifty-two twenty-five Cherry Creek Parkway off the Norton Road is a fifty-four unit Prac facility, uh, also known as Product Rental Assistance Contract. The facility that we're talking about as of January first of tax year 2023, uh, operated on what's called a break-even budget. They're not able to bring in any income. Every bit of income that's brought into the facility is routed right back out as an expense for the property, whether that's utilities, admin fees or the like. Any residual income left over at the end of the year is actually sent back to HUD and recaptured by HUD for their funding. As such, there's, as you can understand, some, a certain amount of operational limitations. I do also want to mention that this facility was not able to take out any debt as part of this government restriction. Uh, so therefore, as you can see, there's a certain amount of operational limitation that these facilities operate under. And that's why, as of the 2023 lead date, the property valuation was made based on the case law in place for such a facility. The transaction that Rich and Gillis is arguing the value should be based on is actually, was actually completed as a financing mechanism to allow the facility to restructure to more effectively operate their property. The property, the, the mechanism they use is called a RAD for Prac conversion. Um, that is sponsored by HUD and it allows facilities such as Cherry Blossom to restructure their organization in order to operate on a Section Eight-based rental contract versus the project-based or the Project Rental Assistance Contract they're under now. It also allows them to take on some debt in the form of a low-income housing tax credit through the use of an investor. The, the, the caveat is that in order to get access to that, uh, program, they have to use a conveyance as a vehicle in which to convey title from the current ownership, which would have been National Church Residences of Columbus, Ohio as of the lead date, to the Cherry Blossom Senior Housing Limited Partnership as proposed in the resolution. This, however, by no means is an arms-length sale and as such is not an indicative of any value for the valuation year. An arms-length sale in the state of Ohio has to be made on the open market between two, uh, motive, typically motivated parties. In this case, neither trip, neither aspect of the sale met that criteria. National Church Residences was both the controlling entity of both the buyer and the seller and by no means was this property ever up on the open market. This was only a sale to, uh, again, to convey title. So what I ask today is just for the board to consider removing just this parcel. I can't speak to any of the other parcels within the, I believe there's like two or three thousand you guys are looking into. Um, but just to look at this and consider potentially removing these. We do have, we've been through these many, many times. Um, I understand that there are cases where these are valid, but this is not one of them. And we're just trying to save everybody a little bit of time and effort here. So I did have just, uh, a little bit to provide with for you all, just, just basically the parcel we're looking at, the notice we received, the resolution. And I have also included an organizational structure chart just to show, you know, we are controlling both sides. This is an arms-length and therefore this should really be dismissed. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Um, we will get back to you on all this. Okay, perfect. So, and here's a couple comments. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mrs. Jimmison. Next will be, uh, Mr. Steve Hall.
Good evening. President Bosso, members of the Southwestern City School District Board of Education. My name is Steve Hall. I'm an attorney with the law firm Xenial Hall and Fairnell LLC. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight on behalf of my client who owns commercial property on Fisher Road. My client received a notice that tonight the board will consider the adoption of a resolution to approve with the filing of a property tax valuation complaint with respect to that property located at forty-five forty-five Fisher Road to attempt to increase the property tax on property owned by my client. The specific resolution is numbered seven-seven-five-zero-nine. Repeat that, seven-seven-five-zero-nine in that packet, uh, mentioned by the previous gentleman in Agenda Item F1. I'm here to urge you to vote no on the resolution since to approve that filing of the complaint is not authorized by law. Such filing would directly violate a provision of Ohio law newly enacted in July of 2022. I'll try to be as brief as possible and then try to answer any questions you may have. In 2022, the Ohio Legislature Limited the rights of certain non-owners of property to challenge the value of property owned by others. For example, there's two relevant, uh, fact, factors here. One is the Board of Education has to approve it, which is why I'm here today and which is why, uh, my client got the letter. Um, but that authorizing vote is not a mere formality. I'm here to explain to you the facts of this matter so that you can make an informed decision why the complaint is not valid. For, for a non-owner, like a Board of Education, for example, to challenge the county auditor's valuation, it's jurisdictionally valid only if there was a recent arms-length sale of the property and then it meets some other elements like at least five hundred thousand dollars of difference from the auditor's value and ten percent. The facts of my case are really simple. There was no sale. In 2021, the owner split a previously existing parcel into two parcels. The reason being that the owner wanted to utilize the Ohio Commercial Condominium provisions for a portion of the property. No sale occurred. This is not what is sometimes referred to as a drop and swap or an entity sale or a swap. That's not what this is. This is merely one big parcel becoming two smaller parcels. Presumably, the attorneys saw a zero-dollar transfer because you have to file a deed when you're doing this. Um, presumably that's what they saw. Um, before I wrap up, currently there are bills pending in the Ohio General Assembly that seek to penalize or otherwise impose phones, uh, fines on political subdivisions and others who are ignoring the recent sale limitation authorized by the Ohio General Assembly recently. Um, you should be aware of that risk in authorizing a complaint that's not valid. And furthermore, sometimes attorney's fees can be granted in some instances. I'll wrap up by saying the contemplated complaint in Resolution seventy-seven-five-zero-nine is not valid. There's not been a sale. This is merely a lot split. Thank you for your time and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions of the board.
Any question? Thank you, Mr. Hall. You, we'll get back to you also.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is student staff achievement with, um, Camille.
Um, Board of Education Student Staff Achievement Report for tonight's meeting. Nate Palai, Palaya, a senior at the Southwestern Clear Academy in the Engineering and Robotics Program, was recently one of the five nominees from Ohio for the U.S. Department of Education Presidential Scholars Program. This prestigious recognition is a testament to his exceptional achievements and dedication to their career technical education field. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in nineteen sixty-four by executive order of the president to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. Each year, up to a hundred and sixty-one students are named as Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Nate will be recognized at the 2024 Legislative Conference this spring and locally at the Ohio State House in February. Congratulations to Nate. West City High School students Savannah Hamilton from Central Crossing High School, Mia Von Garner and Grant Ruffing from Grove City High School, Bon Chum and Suporta Ba from Franklin Heights High School, who have been named scholarship winners of the 2024 Handshake America Competition. Handshake America creates life coaching relationships with gritty student athletes to help them realize their potential for success and inspire them to influence others. Originally inspired by John Wooden's Pyramid, Pyramid of Success, Handshake America developed its five practices. Five P's. Perseverance, passion, positivity, people, and presence. The program helps student athletes leverage their experience gained through competitive sports to become more aware of the basic elements and definition of success. As program winners will receive, one, a scholarship toward continued education beyond high school, two, an assignment of a Handshake America coach, and three, eight groups, eight group sessions in one year with other student athletes and Handshake America coaches. Congratulations to these students. Last month, Hayes Intermediate School held its annual Amazing Shake Competition. A lot of shake. A public speaking and soft skills competition for students in fifth and sixth grade. Participating students were put through three rounds of judging where they were put in different social scenarios and evaluated on their charisma, confidence, poise under pressure, reasoning, eye contact, and handshakes. After three audacious rounds, Hayes sixth grader Kinsley Wildman was named this year's Amazing Shake winner. Congratulations. Congratulations to Central Crossing High School's Kent Harrison, who was named the January twenty-six Columbus Dispatch, OSU Wexner Medical Center's Athlete of the Week. Harrison took home honors following a forty-three-point and six-rebound performance and a game winner in Central Crossing Boys Basketball's double overtime win over Groveport Madison and a sixteen-point and six-rebound effort in a seventy-one fifty-eight loss to Grove City. Congratulations to Kent Harrison. Last but not least, a staff achievement. Congratulations to Ray Miller, boys basketball coach at Franklin Heights High School and formerly Grove City High School, who gained his five-hundredth win on January twenty-third while being to now Winchester fifty-two to forty-nine.
Peterson for that. Next, we'll move on to, um, items for act, action under fiscal and operational management. Probably doing that, the first item will be the revised, uh, permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2024. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the revised appropriations for the year, for January 2024 Exhibit X1. Item number two, investments and financial statements for January 2024. It's recommended the Board of Education in accordance with Section one-three-five point one-four of the Ohio Revised Code, approve January investments Exhibit X2 and cash the distribution report. Um, exhibit, uh, Exhibit X3, sorry. Um, total investments is thirty-three hundred and thirty-three million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Earnings interest month-to-date would be one million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Earnings, um, year-to-date will be nine million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy cents. Interest rates vary from point two, to five point five one percent. Um, item number three is payment of bills. Exhibit X4, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the payment of bills according to this sec, sec, according to this list of checks for the month of January 2024. Um, item number four, it's recommended that the Board of Education accept the donations of eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents and letters of appreciation goes out to all those donors. Thank you very much to all those donors. Item number, um, five is authorization, authorization to pay the bills in accordance with Section fifty-seven oh-five point four-one of the Ohio Revised Code, Exhibit X6. It's recommended the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay the bills for January, which were not processed in accordance with Section fifty-seven oh-five point four-one of the Ohio Revised Code. Item number six will be the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the, uh, Budget Commission in authorizing the, the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Um, item number seven, resolution to authorize the purchase of buses. It's recommended that the Board of Edu, Education accept the bids as originated by the Metropolitan Educational Council for four seventy-eight passenger school buses. Forty-eight passenger, uh, school buses with lift, um, and gasoline buses, two thirty, um, passengers with lift bus and one thirty, um, passenger school bus equipped with radios, cameras at a total cost of one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, these purchase, capital purchases will be made from the permanent improvement, uh, funds. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage. Can I get a second, please? One second, Mrs. D'Angelo. Thank you. Mrs. D'Angelo.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes. Um, under fiscal and operational millions, the second item will be the approved resolution to file complaints against valuations of, uh, real property taxes for the year 2024 or 2023, sorry. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution as presented Exhibit X8. I move that for passage. Can I get a second?
I have a question about that, though. Two items that we're just discussing as you're waiting, like, excited to talk about them.
There's a timeframe that has to be met. I didn't put those out there. I'll have conversations with those. We won't go after it. Did you see more?
Okay, get more information. Thank you.
Can I get a second?
Peterson, second.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes. Um, the next is items for action under this, uh, facility. Well, Ms., Ms. D'Angelo.
Yes. A resolution authorizing Southwestern City School District to advertise and divestment for a contract replaced the walk-in pool or freezer at Jackson Mills School as presented. And I move this item for passage.
One second, then. Can I get a roll call, please? Mrs. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes. Alrighty. Items for action under student, school, and community. Um, there's five action items. Um, the first will be Central Crossing High School baseball team to travel to Richmond, Indiana. Uh, this trip will take place on March ninth. Um, no spit, no days of schools. Forty-five kids will accompany six adult chaperones. Transportation will be from school bus. Um, expenses will be paid through the Central Crossing High School baseball athletic boosters. Item number two is Central Crossing High School softball team traveling to Coco, Toca Beach. Is that how you pronounce that? Uh, Florida. This will occur March twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth. No days of schools will be missed. Fourteen students will accompany two adults. Uh, transportation will be charter bus and the trip is paid through the team fundraising and athletic booster. Item number three is the Grove City High School NJ ROTC to travel to Indianapolis, Indiana. Uh, this will take place February twenty-third and fourth. Um, it'll be twenty-six students accompanied by two chaperones. Um, transportation is by charter bus and all expenses are paid for through the NJ ROTC. Item number four is the Grove City High School show choir to travel to Solon, Ohio. This will be, uh, March second and third. Um, it'll be a hundred and twenty students, chaperoned by sixteen adults. Um, school bus will transport them and it is paid through choir boosters, parents, and students. Um, and the last item is the membership in Ohio High School Athletic Associations for the 2024, 2025 school year. Um, after reviewing these items, I would move them for passage.
Peterson, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a roll call? Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
This is D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Uh, yes. Uh, the next we have personal report with Mrs. Peterson.
On tonight's agenda, there is seven personnel items involving one hundred and forty persons. This includes six certificated and administrative resignations, six certified changes in appointment, fifty-six certificated employments, eleven classified resignations, thirteen classified changes in employment, forty-seven classified employments, and one message of condolence for a deceased staff member. I'm a message of condolence, uh, for a staff member that passed away, William Marcus Chestnut. Marcus Chestnut began his initial employment in the Southwestern City School District on July sixteenth, two thousand and seven, as an analyst in the data department. He resigned that position on November twenty-fourth, two thousand and nine. Marcus returned to the district on April sixth, twenty-ten, to an administrative position as a systems database administrator in our data department and served in that position for the remainder of his career with Southwestern City School District. In recognition and appreciation of his service to the students, staff of our district, a motion is in order by the Board of Education expressing deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Marcus Chestnut, who passed away on February. After reviewing these items, I move them for passage.
Thank you. Peterson, we got a second by Mrs. D'Angelo. We get a roll call. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Bosso, yes. Next, we'll move on to public participation related to non-agenda items. The first, uh, person is Norma Perkins. Will be speaking on Special Education District in support of the Grove City High School staff.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I would like to start by saying that I am a parent of a special needs student within the Southwestern City School District. He is a sophomore at Grove City High School. I also have a senior at another school within our district. In my experience with both schools, I sincerely feel the Grove City High School is presented as a safe, caring environment by the entire staff, excuse me, by the entire staff to the children in their care. But more importantly, Ms. Holly Gilbert has gone out of her way to make sure that these children respect her, trust her, and to do the very best that she can within the safety and regulatory guidelines set forth by the district and the state. I have personally had a chance to work with Ms. Gilbert on several occasions. She has always been caring, kind, and professional while balancing my child's needs and his level of understanding. My son knows beyond a shadow of a doubt. If you bring an issue to Ms. Gilbert, she will always look into it and handle it in a fair manner and make sure that he is safe in that process. We all know that high school is drama central and sometimes the special needs children can be a little more dramatic than most. This is what, this is always meant head-on, upfront, and directly with compassion by the entire staff, but more specifically by Ms. Gilbert herself. Even my eighteen-year-old son that goes to an entirely different school knows that if anyone needs anything at Grove City High School, Ms. Gilbert will be there with help and guidance. Any issues that I have ever brought before her, she has gone out of her way to dig into and openly communicate the results of her findings and any next steps. Has it always been a happy ending for me? No. But she takes the time to explain why to me and to my son. With that information, I can move out of mama bear mode and know that it's been handled properly. I may not always like the outcome, but I do always know it's been handled fairly with my child's best interest. I honestly have been dealing with special needs education my entire life. I have two younger brothers that attended Southwestern City Schools as special needs students at two of our other high schools in the district. Grove City High School treats these children with care, kindness, and compassion, going above and beyond to help them succeed to the best of their abilities, not only during the school hours, but in life later on as well. My experience with other high schools in the district have not been near as kind and caring toward their students. I feel that speaking on behalf of my experience at Grove City High School, the entire staff, but more specifically the special needs staff and Ms. Gilbert, mostly Ms. Gilbert, are, they are all doing their God-given calling by working with these kids, growing with these kids and showing them the love and respect that most people do not deem them worthy of. I commend Ms. Gilbert and the staff for making my very anxious child feel safe to the point that he really wants to go to school at an age where most kids dread it. I sincerely feel it would be a huge detriment to the school, to this district, and to all of the children that she comes in contact with if she was no longer in her position. I am a proud, supportive Grove City Greyhound parent and a comet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, next will be Jeanne Purlich. She'll be co-adjunct on Special Needs at Grove City High School.
Good evening. My name's Jeanne Purlich and my son Rob attends Grove City High School. Rob is a junior this year and receives services with the special needs and cross-categorical programs. Rob has been a student at the high school for three years. Rob is a very active student at the school, participating in many extracurricular activities. Some of his activities include Special Olympic Basketball, where he has been able to act as the team captain this year. He also has been able to sing the national anthem on three occasions at the home game. He also has been able to sing the National Anthem on three occasions at the home games. Rob is a chief in the Junior Navy ROTC, where he is gaining leadership skills and experience. He has made trips with other cadets and chaperones through Corpus Christi, Texas and New York City. Rob attends all the school dances, including the prom and adaptive line dancing. He also works at the Hungry House School Store during the lunch period and during his career development class. Listen, has always received wonderful support and guidance from his teachers, his counselor. The staff of the Opportunities for Ohioans with Disabilities and the administrators, especially Miss Gilbert. They have been there to support and encourage and at times discipline him during his three years at the school. The team, as I call them, includes the teachers, the aides and of course, Miss Gilbert. All who take a very active role in shaping and fostering Rob's high school experiences. We are currently want, working closely with Rob's teachers. To develop some job opportunities outside of school, which may include working part-time with FedEx. I feel that this team is very well represented at his IEPs and ETR meetings and provide the necessary direction for Rob. To be successful in high school and stay on track to graduate next year. As a parent of a child with special needs, I am confident that I am able to reach out to all of the team members. At any time for questions, concerns and direction I have, I may have with my son's education and career goals. As I mentioned, Rob is on course to graduate next year and he hopes to pursue further education in the TOPS program at OSU. His ultimate goal is to work for UPS or FedEx as a driver. I'm here tonight to support the team in the special needs program of Grove City and Miss Gilbert. As my son has been able to pursue his educational goals as well as obtain wonderful high school extracurricular activities. All in part to the supportive and hardworking team of professionals at the school. Thank you for your time and attention.
Alright, we'll move on. Dr. Kelly Dillon, free speech issues and caution.
Good evening and thank you to the Board of Education for maintaining a public space of inquiry, debate and communication. On December fourteenth, the Big Walnut School District made local and national news on a resolution banning any quote. Banner, signs or symbols that promote activist causes or otherwise considered controversial, end quote. From classrooms or school buildings. I know from conversations I have had and have heard in this community, something like this is not out of the realm of possibilities for our district. In an effort to be proactive rather than reactive, I urge the board and our community to consider two important facts. Public education is activism and our freedom of speech does not end at the school door. Let's break down the key component of the resolution, quote banners, signs or symbols that promote activist causes, end quote. This same resolution allows for the flags of the United States, State of Ohio, our military or other states and countries. Our flag that we pledge allegiance to just this evening and probably this morning. Is a symbol of our country and to some activist in nature for democracy and freedom. It's the very reason why so many of us are angered when our flag is desecrated. The last allowance flags of other countries is actually quite controversial. For example, displaying the Taiwanese flag has caused international consternation and has threatened economic and political relationships. In our current international climate, both the Israeli and Palestinian flags are activist in nature and say so much in a simple visual. What one person thinks is normal, natural or even neutral may be considered activist or insightful by another. Public education and the symbols, signs and narrative used in education is activist in nature. Public education includes all children, not just the privileged few. We tell our history in a truthful manner, not sweeping ugly events under a rug. We're spending time and a lot of money to educate complete strangers to benefit a future some of us will never see. I hope this board, especially those new to the board, consider how radical public education still is in our nation's very short history. In comparison to the rest of the world. This doesn't mean our schools should be void of any controversy or discomfort. Symbols, banners and causes are critical to education. If we are to consider the stars and stripes as a symbol of freedom, we need to protect those freedoms with action. This brings me to my second point. As I've stated at other board meetings, teachers, staff and students, freedom of speech does not stop at the school grounds. The Supreme Court has a long history protecting student and teacher speech ruling. School districts cannot limit speech because of possible disruption. The court has ruled protest speech like armbands, signs or buttons cannot be banned. They've ruled a coach can pray at the fifty-yard line, although some consider this religious activism. They have however drawn boundaries around speech that can be prohibited. If speech is graphic, vulgar or lewd, then the school can limit that speech. Any type of nudity, slurs, depiction is of interpersonal violence, most likely. And can be legally limited in our schools as they should be. A sign promoting a meeting of dogs for Christ is not graphic, vulgar or lewd. A rainbow showing allyship is not graphic, vulgar or lewd. A safe space is not graphic, vulgar or lewd. If our school board were to consider prohibiting any symbol considered activist. Tens of thousands of dollars would be spent in a futile attempt to justify unconstitutional resolutions as Big Walnut is realizing now. There are dozens of historical cases and quite a few recent ones I could reference in order to persuade our board and community. To advocate for more freedom of speech rather than limiting it. This time and money could be better spent helping our students understand their constitutional rights. How powerful their voices can be and the deep history of our country, including those decisions we may or may not agree with. It's imperative our board does not limit the freedom of speech for some and allow for others. Please do not ever consider a resolution to the Southwestern City School District like this. Thank you.
Good evening. Nurse Debbie Dent was Lexi's nurse when Lexi was at Buckeye Woods. Nurse Debbie has always held very high standards as a nurse, just as the other nurses in this district do. Our nurses are always one hundred percent for our students. A nurse's intent is to do no harm. It's even their oath. Our nurses in this district act on their credentials, medical knowledge and experiences. They aren't able to act on anything else as there is nothing else. Our nurses have zero guidelines, zero protocols, zero procedures, zero policies and there is zero consistency. When it comes to anything medical in this district, it's unacceptable. Our nurses aren't even being managed by a person with any kind of credentials. Yes, our nurses are being managed by an administrator with zero medical knowledge. The person before her saying zero medical knowledge. So what happens when we insist on being a rogue district? Buckeye Woods happens. A great nurse was made to resign by the administration in this district. Why? Because it was much easier to do that than to finally address the real issues. Not having consistent. Protocols put in place and acting under board policy like surrounding school districts do because that is the law. This needs to be corrected, just as it was with Principal Coffield, as both of them did not violate board policy. For almost two years, I have personally witnessed just what administrators are capable of when not acting under board policy. On January twenty-second, it was decided by this board. That the Law Office of Omar Tarazi handled legal for the district. Why did Melissa Bondi with Bricker Grayden sit in on Lexi's IEP meeting this past Wednesday? Is Nicole going to pay for this service since it was her personal request? Administrators have refused to allow Lexi's county coordinator to attend her IEP meetings on three separate occasions. Only allowed the school nurse to attend two of those meetings. We've had years of IEP meetings and only two meetings a nurse has been allowed to attend. That is unacceptable. They decide, they can decide that they are offended and wrongfully adjourn an IEP addendum meeting. Just this past Wednesday and call the Grove City Police on Lexi's doctor because all five one, one hundred and twenty pounds of her is so intimidating. On March first, twenty-twenty-three, Dr. Silverberg and I met with Bill Wise and Melissa Bondi of Bricker Grayden. And was advised that they would hire a third party to investigate Lexi's videos of neglected abuse. Bill hired Claire Parsons of Woodlamping, where she had been since May of twenty-twenty-two. Claire allowed administrators to sit in on witness statements to intimidate them. Currently, Claire is a lawyer at Bricker Grayden with Melissa Bondi, which is also the same firm. That Nicole Tayo recruited Lauren Anthony from as well. I think you have some explaining to do. I have filed complaints on current staff in this district. I am requesting the board hire a new law firm or utilize Tarazi Law Firm. To finally investigate. All investigations in this district unbiasedly. Reinvestigate Lexi's neglect and abuse as it was corrupted from the start. Bill has instructed the district's IT department to reroute all of my communications involving all three of my children to a certain administrator to silence me. I have to ask, why are we as a district doing this? Why are we paying over one million dollars to a superintendent that is using this district for his own personal gain? I am strongly encouraging all students, staff and parents to come forward and share your personal experiences of intimidation and corruption. Please do your part as I am doing mine. It's the right thing to do. Please join me on speaking on Gritani, Machula, Smith, Gilbert, Tayo, Yeoman, Wine Gardner, Hufford, Wise, Wise, Wise. And all the other staff that have failed to follow board policy. Over fifty thousand of us have voted you in here to help us and our students to do the right thing moving forward. We feel that you were more than capable of doing so. We expect it. Thank you.
Next, we got items for discussion, board items, any discussions? Scene nine, we'll move on to executive session. Um recommend the Board of Education. Um adjourn the executive session in accordance with policy zero one six six to discuss the employment dismissal. Discipline or demotion of a public employee. Make a motion.
Peterson, motion.
Thank you, Miss Peterson. Second, Miss DeAngelo. Miss Peterson.
Yes.
Angela Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. Um I don't expect any decisions to be made tonight, so. I don't know if you guys want to hang out or not, but.
We know we won't.
We're here for you. Roll call. Miss DeAngelo Steele.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso. Here. Um I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Miss Peterson. Roll call. Mister, uh Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Angela Steele.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you everybody for being here.